Okay. Welcome to the Regre meeting of Morganton City Council, March the sixth, two thousand and twenty-three. Normally you have public comments at the first of our meeting, and Renee, has anyone signed up?
No, sir.
At this point, I'd like to ask Butch McSwain to lead us in the pledge of allegiance, if you please rise.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Next, we'll have an invocation by our city attorney. Oh, is Lisa here? Lisa Marshall.
The invocation.
I don't think she's there.
If you'll give us an invocation.
All right, thank you. Welcome, everyone. Let's pause for a moment of silence. I'd like to ask everyone to, in their own way, to consider the significance, the importance, the seriousness of the business that we do as a city. And then I will close with a brief word of prayer. Gracious God, we come before you with appreciation and thanks for this wonderful season of year, for this wonderful community in which we live and in which many of us work and serve. We ask your blessing and guidance on the members of the city council, on all the employees of the city, and on all of our wonderful citizens and residents, and ask your protection and wisdom for them. Amen.
Thank you, Louis. I'd recognize council, we have Mayor Protem Wendy over on our far right. Thank you very much. Chris Jernika is not going to be with us tonight, he's out on business. Louis Vina, our city attorney, Ronnie Thompson, your mayor, Sally Sandy, city manager, Butch McSwain, city council, Chris Hawkins, city council, Renee Carswell, our city clerk. Interpreters for the deaf are Danielle Stillman Bridges and Ernest Williams the fourth. Our first order of business is a retirement resolution. I'd like to read that resolution. It's a resolution honoring Sarah S. Williams. Whereas Sarah S. Williams was employed by the city of Morganton as chef and kitchen manager in the community house department on December thirtieth, two thousand and thirteen, and whereas Sarah Williams has faithfully served and given of her time and efforts for the benefits of the citizens of the city of Morganton for nine years and eleven months, and whereas Sarah S. Williams retired from the city of Morganton as chef kitchen manager in the community house department on March first, two thousand and twenty-three, and whereas the Morganton City Council wishes to officially recognize the contribution of Sarah S. Williams and express their appreciation for a job well done, now therefore be it resolved by the city of Morganton that the mayor present this resolution of Sarah S. Williams, adopted this sixth day of March, two thousand and twenty-three, to have a motion to accept that resolution. Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. I'm going to ask Mayor Protem Wendy Cato if she'll make that present.
Sarah was not able to be here tonight.
We'll get that to her. Okay. Next, on our public advocacy is the recognition for the historic Morganton Festival, which received an award for best event association, associated with an event, from the North Carolina Association of Festivals and Events for the MADE competition. I'm going to ask Abby if she'll come forward and give us some details, along with any guests you'd like to invite. And Abby, if you could tell us about the MADE competition or...
Absolutely. So I have with me my cohort in planning the annual MADE competition, Paul Gant, and I will give the floor over to him in just a moment because he has wonderful details to share about this endeavor. But I am thrilled that MADE was recognized at the North Carolina Association of Festival and Events Conference this past January. It just feels like a great honor to have our work being recognized at the state level.
I mean, I won't talk long because we know that I can, but I just want to thank everybody here for the support that they give to us, the group, and most importantly, the students of this county, because that's where all the support goes. It gives them something to shoot for, something to aim for, and elevates the level and the skill of our students and our standing within the state of North Carolina. And so between the community and what you all do here on the council, it makes a better place for our students moving forward. So thanks for everybody, and we move forward for another fun year. So come out, we've got a great activity planned for them again this year. So thank you for everything.
What does the acronym MADE stand for? If you could tell our TV audience, please.
Yes, Morganton Arts Design and Engineering. We've found that those qualities that have bought Morganton back in the day upon the world scape as far as furniture and textiles are the same skills that we want to pull out in our students today to reestablish the greatness of this area and our student minds going forward. And I think that's a very good acronym for everything that we do out there. And I think it represents us, the students, and everybody very well.
Thank you all for a great job. It was a great exhibition and everyone had fun.
And it'll be in October.
Yes, so the date for this year's event is Friday, October twentieth. It'll be at Kama, and we are open to middle school and high school student teams. So if you want to find out more about the competition and how to get involved, MADE is available for researching at Morgantonfest.org is the website.
Thank you, Abby, so much.
Thank you.
Thanks, Paul.
Next on our agenda is a proclamation celebrating a thirty-year sister cities partnership. I'd like to read that proclamation. Whereas the city of Morganton partners with other municipalities, districts, and regions of different countries to promote business and economic development opportunities for all, and whereas the city of Morganton strives to promote international cooperation, understanding, and development through a variety of exchanges with citizens of other countries, and whereas the city of Morganton promotes international student programs and educational informative exchanges between all of its citizens and the citizens of the Altenberg Land Region, and whereas the city of Morganton encourages the promotion of international relations and meaningful friendships through shared dialogue and experiences between the people of Altenberg Land and the people of the city of Morganton, and whereas March twenty-fourth, two thousand and twenty-three marks the thirtieth anniversary between the four counties in the Western Piedmont of North Carolina, which is Alexander Burke, Caldwell, and Catawba, and the Altenberger Land Region in Germany. Therefore, be it resolved that I, Ronnie Thompson, mayor of the city of Morganton, on behalf of the Morganton City Council, do recognize the year-long celebration of the thirty-year partnership between Western Piedmont Sister Cities Association and the Altenberger Land Region, and encourages citizens to support and participate in all activities connected with this special year of celebration, adopted this sixth day of March, two thousand and twenty-three. Ronnie Thompson, mayor, Renee Carswell, city clerk, do I have a motion to accept this proclamation? Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor say aye. I'm going to ask councilwoman Chris Hawkins to present that resolution to Tracy Tremble, who is with the Western Piedmont Sister Cities Association. Tracy, if you'll come up front, please.
Tracy, doing anything for thirty years is certainly worth celebrating. For the proclamation, this is a year-long celebration. So on behalf of the city of Morganton and city council, I'm very honored to present this proclamation to the Western Piedmont Sister Cities Association.
Tracy, would you like to tell us a little bit about Altenberger?
Yes, definitely. Well, thirty years ago, we formed a partnership with Altenberger Land. It's the former eastern area of Germany, and it's in the middle of the country. And we want to make sure that everybody knows that it does encompass the four counties. It's not just, a lot of people think, because we have a lot of meetings in Hickory, that it's just in Catawba County, but it's for all four counties. And we work with education and business, and we actually have a delegation coming over in October this year from Altenberger Land. And we are going to bury a time capsule with items from each of the four counties while they're here, and we're going to have virtual meeting with them on the twenty-fourth and share what we're going to be burying in the time capsule. So we hope everybody gets involved. It was a little bit dormant during COVID. We met virtually, but we are in the process of pairing up the schools. Would love to get the Math and Science Center involved in apprenticeship exchanges and just lots of other things. So we hope that everybody can participate, and thank you for your time this evening and for the honor of the proclamation. I'll make sure that the group gets it.
I want to tell you that I went to the meeting where we talked with all the mayors of that area, and it was very interesting, and I thoroughly enjoyed it. And be glad that we only have five of us. Some of them have twenty-three people that the mayors have to answer to. So it was very interesting, and they asked a lot of really good questions of the group that was there. So I thoroughly enjoyed it.
Thank you, and thank you for participating. We try and hold the virtual meetings with a theme in mind, so education. This last one was governments and municipalities. We've had arts and music, and we bring leaders from both sides together so that we can share the differences and the similarities that we have so that they can learn and the students can learn. And so it brings a little bit of culture to our area as well. So we really appreciate it.
Tracy, thank you so much.
Thank you so much.
Next on our public advocacy is our chili cook-off, which is going to be Thursday, March the ninth, from eleven AM to one-thirty at the Morganton Community House. And I think we have an ad to run and maybe a video.
Nothing but net. Nothing but rim. See, I'm so good. I should have played college. You mean elementary school.
Casey, what is that delicious smell?
Well, it's usually me, but I've been sporting.
Casey, do you see that?
I do. Let's follow it.
Warm up with a bowl of chili during the twenty-ninth annual Downtown Development Association, ACC Chili Cook-Off, presented by Burke County Farm Bureau Insurance. Amateur chili competition sponsored by CJ and Jess Real Estate. For just seven dollars, enjoy all you can eat: chili, cornbread, salad, dessert, and drink. Tickets available online or at the door. We'll see you from eleven to one-thirty on Thursday, March the ninth, at the Community House in historic downtown Morganton for a bite of chili, ACC basketball, and more information, visit downtownmorganton.com or call eight-two-eight-four-three-eight-five-two-five-two.
Confused? Don't be. It's about time for the ACC Chili Cook-Off at the Morganton Community House, and it's time for us to get back into the kitchen.
I'm really not sure what else could be said after that. I did have a call from a concerned citizen about a person in a big red suit running through town, and now I know what they were talking about. So Downtown Association, we just sort of let them go, and they're very creative. I appreciate that. I also have another thing that council is not aware is on the agenda. I've been asked to talk about the Burke Trails Day, and I'll hold this up. It's going to be a free event at the comic, our Performing Arts Center on...
This Saturday.
This Saturday, March the eleventh, from twelve until five. It's the Year of the Trail, and it's sponsored by several people, but we have a guest speaker, who is Jennifer Far Davis, who actually is the fastest woman to have walked the Appalachian Trail. And Randy Johnson has a book on Grandfather Mountain, they're going to be there. So this is part of the twenty-twenty-three year of the Trail Celebration. It's going to have kids' activities, food trucks, and exhibitors. So please come Saturday from twelve to five to our Performing Arts Center, as we know it, Kama. So thank you so much.
Mr. Mayor, if I could add, Deborah Holt Noel is going to be the emcee for the event, who is, of course, on North Carolina Weekend or a lot of the PBS shows. So it should be a great day.
Great host, it really will be good. Next on our agenda is the pop-up farmer's market, which is Saturday, March the eleventh, from nine to one. So you can go to the farmer's market from nine to one and come do Kama from twelve to five. That should take up your whole Saturday, so that is great. Next is Art in the Park. John David Brown the third is an artist and graphic designer who lives in Conover. He really has some fantastic artwork that will be in city hall during the month of March. Our Kama Performing Arts Center on Friday, March the tenth, is Fairy Tales on Ice. Tuesday, March fourteenth, at seven-thirty, the U.S. Air Force Heritage American Band. Tickets are required, but the tickets are free. Saturday, March twenty-fifth, at seven-thirty, are the Hiplet Ballerinas. Friday, March thirty-first, at seven-thirty, yesterday and today, the Interactive Beatles Experience. And Monday, April third, at seven-thirty, is On Your Feet, the story of Emilio and Gloria Estefan. So lots of stuff happening in March. Okay. Next on our agenda is the consideration of changing our city council meeting time. Sally, would you give us some information?
Absolutely. So you just announced that on Monday, April third, at Kama, is going to be the On Your Feet show. And so that coincides with our council meeting. So asking the council to consider moving our meeting to begin at five o'clock instead of six o'clock for those attending the show.
What's the wish of council?
I make the motion to change the time of the April third, two thousand and twenty-three city council meeting from six PM to five PM.
I have a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. Next on our agenda, I believe, is the consent agenda, and I believe we have ten items, Sally?
We do, and just before that, we'd like to report that the rate committee for the power agency has started their meetings for budget season. We are there again. The consent agenda includes items that we would ask you to approve in one motion, unless somebody wants something taken off and discussed separately. And for those of you viewing at home, that includes minutes from the February sixth meeting. No tax releases to report this time. A budget amendment for fifteen thousand dollars, recognizing receipt of a contribution from an anonymous donor to help with the Main Street Art Program and the art project that we have going on. And then two agreements, master agreements for professional engineering services. We have had two engineering firms that have submitted their qualifications that we would like to add to our list of on-call engineers that we can work with. And those are Garver Engineering Services and High-Fill Infrastructure Engineering. Participation in the two thousand and twenty-four Urban Archery Season, which would be from January the thirteenth of two thousand and twenty-four to February eighteenth of two thousand and twenty-four, something we participated in for years. Approval of the downtown calendar of events, and along with that, the state requirement that we adopt an ordinance which schedules our street closures. Because it's that time again for things to start up. It's coming around very fast. And then a resolution to amend the electric transfer policy of the city. You discussed this at the workshop, amending that to tie our transfer to the gross fixed assets of the electric fund. And then another policy amendment, which you also discussed at the workshop on February the twenty-fourth, and that is to amend our fund balance policy, taking our unallocated unrestricted fund balance or savings in the general fund from a required fifteen percent of expenditures to thirty-five percent of expenditures. And then finally, a resolution in support of the Innovation Campus Project, which is being done locally. The Industrial Commons is leading that charge, and that is the redevelopment of the Drexel Three and Five properties on the bypass and some other small property located near there for a housing project. And they are seeking state support and funding for that project.
Do any members of council wish to have any items removed from the consent agenda? If not, do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda as submitted.
Do I have a second? Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. Our first order of new business is consideration of award of a community development block grant, small business loan to Morganton General Store, DBA Swedes Cafe. I'll call them Sally.
So the Hicks own the general store and the cafe located at one sixteen West Union Street. Very popular downtown destination. And they are looking to make some improvements and install a cooking hood with an exhaust fan to support their menu, which has increased and grown over the years that they've been in business. They have applied for one of our CDBG small business loans, thirty thousand dollars. That requires one job be created, and they are prepared to do that and will be doing that. This meets our HUD guidelines, it meets our Mission 2030 goals, supporting tourism and growth and revitalization in downtown. One of those. Staff has reviewed the business plan and everything associated with it, recommend approval. A personal guarantee will be required for closing of the loan and would ask you to consider adopting it.
Okay, what's the wish of council?
Mr. Mayor, since I ate breakfast there this morning, I would like to enter the motion to award a CDBG small business loan in the amount of thirty thousand dollars to Harvey and Beth Hicks with Morganton General Store and Swedes Cafe LLC to be used to assist with the purchase of restaurant equipment for a business located in downtown Morganton.
Thank you, Butch. I have a motion, do I have a second? Thank you, Wendy. Any discussion? How was breakfast?
Excellent.
Thank you.
I recommend the croissant sandwich.
Okay. Any further discussion?
It's just that, you know, the general store has, they're open all the time. They're open every day. They support the downtown, and it's been a real, a real stable business in our downtown, even through COVID. So I feel that this is something that we can support them so that they can expand what they're doing.
That's right.
Thank you, Wendy.
They're a traffic generator in downtown, which we desperately need.
All in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. Next on our agenda is the consideration of approval of the Kama Performing Arts Center Master Plan. Sally?
And I believe Sharon's going to take this one. This is a project that you all know we've been working on for months.
And Chad will bring it up for us. I've got pictures so that folks can see. So Chad, I'll just say, okay, all right. We worked with DLR Group out of Charlotte to run the master plan and to do the facilitation. We had a steering committee that was great, made up of all ages, backgrounds, ethnic groups. I mean, really, I was very proud of them. They came up with guiding principles, and that's to support Kama's mission statement, which is to inspire creativity and broaden the mind of all through the power of the arts, to improve the patron experience. And most importantly, it was the highest strength, was to position Kama to become a regional destination for incredible cultural programming. As I just said, it was a top priority. We actually had over five hundred people come back on the survey. You rarely get about a hundred. And I know some of these say it's like three oh six on this one. Some of them didn't always answer the questions, so it kind of throws you off. But really tremendous input for Kama, okay? Some of the other top priorities, which we were all aware, but I want the public to know, was the better acoustics that we've talked about for a long time, more comfortable seating, bigger lobby, improved ticketing, and most importantly, improved restrooms, especially for the ladies. The recommended areas of work, if you'll see the breakdown by phases, on your left, if you will, is the lobby where it says phase three. The auditorium is phase one, and phase two would be back of house, okay? So we've recommended that phase one, as I just said, be the performance system, the audio system, and the auditorium renovation itself. And that is to help with the patron. Phase two, we still believe that the back of house at that point, because you've got to be able to support. What we did learn in doing this is what we are missing. And I will tell you that this weekend, it showed a lot. We have more and more dance academies, and they are big money. And we do not have enough room in the back. I probably should have put a tent up, but we didn't. And they made it work, they just, they went everywhere. So some of the performance systems, I won't read all these, but just to let you know, we're looking at the lighting, the rigging, the main loudspeakers, the audio infrastructure, video projection, stuff like that. And back of house communication is another thing that came out. Go ahead. Also, some of the lighting, mechanical controls, and small things like the replacement of the washer and dryer, which is currently separated. No, go figure. Go ahead. The auditorium renovation had to do with house lights, the seats, the improved accessibility. As you may or may not know, if you've not been there, we are not handicap accessible. You can get a small wheelchair in, but you have to sit in the back of the house. It was never built as such that you could get to a middle section, but we can make that happen. And so that's one of our major things for the auditorium itself. Go ahead. And as I said, the acoustical upgrade. The front of house renovation, of course, will show the most. Again, renovating the restrooms, upgrading the lobby finishes and furniture, adding some acoustical treatment in the lobby, and also improving the lighting throughout, which is desperately needed. Recondition the elevator. It is also not a handicap, and they didn't build it with thoughts of moving a table or a chair, really. It's very strange. Nor were any of the doors, any of the doors. So new interior wayfinding, improved ticketing. We get a lot of complaints about our wayfinding. Ronnie asked me at least forty times each night, Sharon, can you tell them where the bathroom is? Where's the bathroom? You need a sign for the bathroom. So we're going to get some signs for the bathroom. Yeah. Front of house addition, create new front for the building and a multipurpose room. That says one-twenty, and I'm sorry, but it should say up to three hundred. It can seat dinner for two hundred and I think hold three fifty-four performance. Expand the concessions, our concessions are doing much better. Renovate the area of the existing amphitheater, which would turn into a plaza, because people want outdoor space to have activity, but they don't want another performance space. So that was something that came out of it. And the other thing is that a lot of folks said is, it always looks dark. You can't tell if there's anything happening. I mean, we actually have something in there two hundred days of the year, but people have no idea. And then you're spending your other two days cleaning up and getting ready for the next one. So, okay, go ahead. And then I won't go into back house again, but I will say that this dock is four foot lower than any tractor trailer that backs up to it. So you can, I don't really have to make you understand that when something is two hundred pounds and you have to lift it and get it down, that it doesn't work. The other small thing, and I know this sounds small, but none of us thought about it, is there's no crew restrooms back there. So when everybody's taking a break in the auditorium, they're out front, they're crammed. In the back, the performers are in there, and so there's nowhere for the crews to go. So never thought of that. Move on. And go ahead again. Just to your left up front, where the round circles are, if you can tell, that would be the addition that would actually go over the ladies restroom area. So that's already a built structure. We would actually be able to go on top of the second, of the structure, if you will, on the first floor. Okay. Show you the pretty pictures now. So please understand... So please understand that this is just this architect's rendering. I believe there's more that can be done, better look. But the main thing here is that on the second floor, you would have a outdoor space, which would be key. And then on the third floor, you would have maybe a smaller outdoor space. But the second floor outdoor space would be awesome. Just so much more that could be done up there. But more importantly, it would also serve as an overhang to the first floor, where we have tried to argue about an awning for years, and you can't figure out how to get one in there. Go ahead. This is if you walk in the front door. This picture confuses me because of the way it's laid out. But if you walk in the front door of Kama, you would see the concession stand. To the left would be the new stairwell going up. And then that, what you're seeing on the top floor, is the new addition. And then, of course, the upgrade to the finishes in the lobby. Okay. This is what we imagined the second floor being. And it just, I told everybody, I dream about this space. Can't happen soon enough, okay? Go ahead, that's the back. So that's our dream. I'm very excited. I just want to tell you folks that, first of all, I'm very appreciative of you allowing us to do a master plan. And secondly, I have the privilege of speaking at the North Carolina Main Street Program and at the National Main Street Program on master plans. I'm doing several sessions that, as usual, Liz talks me into. But the main one that I'm doing is the master plan. And people don't understand how important it is, or how it can drive your money. And you only have to look at Morganton to know what we've done in 32 years. But it takes that consistency of going through. So I'm very excited for Kama. Our numbers are up, I expect a really good year this year. And so that's our goal. So thank you so much.
Yeah, and a reminder, Kama opened in 1986. Okay, so this was built in a different time.
That's right.
And since that time, we've added the Ben Long Fresco, which was the biggest renovation and the biggest addition to the building, of course. And I mean, we've done a little bit of bathroom changing in that time and a little bit of mechanical system work. But basically, what we've got, it was what was envisioned then. And it has served us very well.
Extremely.
And something that most communities our size really don't have and, you know, don't have it to be proud of. But it's time that we start looking at it. And obviously, this is going to get phased, and we're going to figure out that and, you know, start looking as we go through budget season because it is that time to try to figure out how we attack the phases.
Oh, and Sally, most people think of it as a luxury, but it's really an economic driver for this community. So I think that that's why we feel it's so important, not only as something for our citizens, but something that draws people to our area.
Correct.
Those for business and pleasure.
That's right. And remember, last year, one time, we had, you know, run the numbers from our system, and we had sold tickets in like 43 zip codes or something like that, so.
People don't see how many times that there's 1,000 people in the house.
Sharon, I'd like to say thanks to staff, especially for doing a lot of the groundwork, but really, the people in the community. I've been to all the sessions, and it's just amazing the people that have shown up and given their input and their wishes of what we need to see happen at Kama for the next 20 or 30 years.
10, Ronnie, 10. I don't have 20 years left in me, 10. Seven would be good, four would be better.
The dream goes on.
I mean, if somebody just wrote me a $10 million check, I could go home. There's people out there that would do that.
We'll talk to Wendy about it, okay. What's the wish of council?
I'll make a motion to approve and adopt the Kama Performing Arts Center Master Plan.
Okay, I have a motion, do I have a second? Do I have a second? Any discussion? All in favor of the motion, please say aye. Motion passes. Next is a consideration of award of contract for professional service to develop a comprehensive land use plan. Sally?
And this is from our workshop as well. And Wendy Smith is here to talk about it. You just heard about planning and how important it is. And this one's at the top of the list.
So building on what Sharon was saying about the importance of master plans, the comprehensive plan is essentially a large master plan for the entire city to guide our growth and development over the next, this one is scoped for the next 15 years. You had a plan that was developed in 2009, 2010, and that's guided you pretty well through that time. But we all know there's been some significant changes in the way the world works and in our local community in that time. So it's a good time to be able to look at updating that plan. We put out a request for proposals in January, received those proposals back, and a team of the five of our senior-level staff reviewed those. And Kim Lee Horn was the successful candidate for that. You received their presentation at the workshop a couple of weeks ago on that. And we are asking you to award a contract not to exceed $200,000 to them, which is in the budget this year.
What's the wish of council?
A motion to award a contract to Kim Lee Horn and Associates Incorporated for the development of a comprehensive land use plan at a price not to exceed $200,000 and to allow for the mayor and/or the city manager to execute all agreements regarding this contract.
And Wendy raised her hand to make a second. And so I have a second, any discussion? All in favor of the motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion passes.
So this will be another opportunity for our public and our community to get very involved and engaged in this. And we will be putting together a steering committee and then quite a few events and be advertising for everyone to take part in that.
Does any members of council have anything else to come before the board? If not, we adjourned.